Well, I say we go ahead and get the meeting started. And so we'll go ahead and call it to order. If everybody is okay with that, let's go ahead and say the allegiance to the US and Texas flags. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic. For which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas flag. One state, our God, one indivisible. All right. And we did not have any public comments to the board. And so we can skip that section, but we do have a consent agenda. Did everybody have a chance to look at the minutes from last week? Have you got any questions?
No questions here.
Okay, do I have a motion from the board?
I move to approve consent agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. So we'll go ahead and go into the action items since we don't have many public comments. The first is considering the approval of the investment policy firms, training sources, and officers.
Yes, we have our new CFO, Chris Lynn, is on the job as of April 2nd, and he will be providing the board the action item for the investment policy firms, training sources, and officers. Chris, take it away.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Reese. So this is an annual approval that's required. In your board packet, you have policies, CDA legal and local. You also have a resolution that we are asking you to approve that allows the Texas Association of School Boards, Texas Association of School Administrators, Texas Association of School Business Officials, and the Texas Association of Counties, Education Department, and courses offered through region service centers and universities to be used as training and certification for district investment designees. This, we are recommending that the board approve myself and Ms. Debbie Whitaker as the investment officers for the district. And we are also recommending that the board approve Wood Forest Bank, Texas Term, Texpool, TechStar, First Public, which is Lone Star Investment Pool, and Texas Class Investment Pools to continue as authorized investment options for all district funds, as well as TCG, who acts as an additional manager for the scholarship funds. Like I said, this is an annual approval, and it's exactly the same approval that you have given in years past.
Well, thank you, Chris, for your first voyage on our presentation to our board meeting. Welcome.
Thank you.
We usually, as you say, we usually do this every single year. Did any of the new members, you guys haven't seen this before, do you have any questions about what this is? Doesn't sound like we do. So are there any other questions or any motions for the board?
I'll make the motion if that's okay.
Go for it.
We recommend the board approve Chris Lynn and Debbie Whitaker as investment officers to make district investment and fund transfers on an as-needed basis. And I recommend board's approval of Wood Forest Bank, Texas Term, Texpool, TechStar, First Public, and Texas Class Investment Pools to continue as authorized investment options for all district funds.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We'll go on to our next agenda item, which is consider the approval of the educator appraiser appraisal waiver.
Yes, due to COVID-19, we were unable to complete our evaluations and appraisals of all of our teachers at each campus. And so the state requires that a waiver be submitted to do that, and Dr. Lopez will present that to the board.
Okay, good evening, everyone. As Dr. Reese said, because of due to the extended closures of our school, our principals were unable to complete the requirements of their T-test evaluations of their teachers. And so we're coming to you tonight to ask for some changes to be made to our T-test system. And really, it's pretty simple. It's only two. We're going to ask number one, that the spring walkthrough requirement be suspended. Many of our teachers did receive, or all of our teachers received their fall walkthrough. Many of them did receive their spring, but some of them did not. We'd ask that that one requirement be suspended. And in addition, since they're not in face-to-face conversations all the time, that they allow the summative conference to be conducted through phone or video conferencing, which luckily, they're all getting very good at right now. So we're still going to have conversations and evaluations, but we're going to ask that we be allowed to do that through phone and video conferencing. And then once you approve that change tonight, then we'll apply for the waiver through TEA to make those alterations to our evaluation tool.
Makes sense? Did anyone have any questions from the board? Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve applying for a waiver from TEA to revise requirements for the 19, 2020 T-test status.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Moving on to our information items. The first is just kind of a general update on COVID-19 and what we're doing with our district operations and instructional programs.
Yes, this is a great opportunity for us to update the board and the public on the district operations and our instructional programs for remote learning. And we will start with a update on the COVID-19 response from our finance department. Chris?
Yes, sir. So the most important part for our employees was that all employees got paid last Wednesday on the regularly scheduled payday. We have continued to have our accounts payable check run. We had one last Monday. Our next scheduled accounts payable check run is scheduled for April 29th. I have registered the district with FEMA so that we can start any reimbursement process for any expenditures that are allowable under the FEMA program. And we are tracking any expenditures that we believe might qualify with a special budget code. That way, we can account for all of those expenditures and easily report that information to FEMA. And so those, just a few of the things that are taking place in the finance department.
Okay, thank you, Chris. And now we'll move on to operations, and Bobby Morris will cover operations.
Hey, real quick, can I jump in? If you're not speaking, can you put on mute so we don't get the feedback from everybody's computer? Is that okay?
Can everybody hear me? Thumbs up if they can. All right, thank you. Hope everybody is safe, you and your families, and everybody's healthy. I have four departments that report to me, and at this time, all four of those departments have been challenged to submit to me a transition plan to expand the essential employees that might need to start coming in to work for either closing down the 2019, 2020 school year and/or starting up the 2021 school year. An example of that is when child nutrition, when we left in the middle of March, child nutrition and all of us left with hopes of coming back to work in two or three weeks, they didn't. So child nutrition did not leave our kitchens in the shape that they will be in through the summer. So we've got to bring those people back to do our normal closing down of a school year, such as, you know, food that's in a freezer that needs to be taken out and those types of things. So they're submitting plans to me for transitioning back workers back into our facilities, since the governor has kind of opened up the facilities at this point. I'll start with SSC, our cleaning crew. They continue to deep clean our facilities. They're getting our facilities ready to start 2021. As they clean areas, they are covering these areas with like shelves, they're covering them with paper, and making sure that they are trying, they're trying to keep them as sanitized as possible until we get to come back. And then, of course, they'll take those coverings off where people can do their work. So as they dust, as they clean, as they wipe down, when they get finished with an area, then they're covering that area with paper to keep it clean. Our child nutrition department has been one of our departments that's been working onsite almost every day with some employees. As you know, we're providing meals five days per week at Lincoln Elementary School. We went from a five-day schedule of dispersing those meals. We started this week, actually yesterday, where we're going to pass out meals two days a week. We're going to pass them out on Monday. And Wednesday, on Monday, we will pass out enough meals for Monday and Tuesday. On Wednesday, we will pass out enough meals for Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. To this point, we have provided 9,500 meals in 22 days. That's an average of 432 meals per day. Of course, our transportation department, not a lot they can do at this point. Bus drivers aren't driving buses. We have not had our mechanics or any of our office staff in our buildings at this time. But what I will say is SSC, our cleaning crew, has gone in and wiped down the inside of every one of our buses. They've scrubbed the floors of our buses. And then as a final treatment of our buses for COVID-19, they used the victory sprayer inside of our buses, just like they demonstrated to us at the board meeting in February, I believe it was. Our maintenance department, again, we have not had maintenance crews in our buildings. We have had a few things that Joe Canard, our director of maintenance, had to go up there, had to go up to some of our buildings and handle. We've been able to do those things just with Joe and maybe a couple of other guys that we've called in, you know, periodically. SSC, our cleaning crew, has been our eyes, and anytime they saw, here's a leaky faucet or a faucet that's running or something like that, they called Joe, they've been in good contact with Joe, and we've been able to go up and take care of those things. Our technology department, they've been pretty busy during this time, helping with setting up the online instruction format and passing out laptops to those students that did not have the capability or did not have a device to use for online learning. I think that's my four departments. Last thing I guess I want to say is I did not provide you with a hard copy of the board update, the bond update, excuse me, this month. But what I can tell you is there were no increases in expenditures, and there was an increase in interest earned. So the format that I usually use would show a little more money in the bank than it showed last time. I think that's all I have, unless somebody has a question.
Okay, thank you, Bobby. Good report. Next up, we have Dr. Lopez with Human Resources and Communications.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Reese and the board. So our HR department's mantra is people are our priority. And we kind of kept that at the forefront of our minds as we've been doing this remote work from home. So our team's been holding twice-weekly Zoom meetings to coordinate and make certain we're all on the same page. There's been a lot of one-on-one communication with administrators, staff members, our substitute teachers, making sure that we're available for all questions about their leave benefits, pay, and qualifications, because of course loans have gone up because interest rates are down, various questions about their transfers, resignations, and retirements, because this is the season right now for movement in a school district. So we've been available for all of those, and I think the team's done a really good job of making that those are answered immediately. Spring's also our busiest recruitment time, and that looks a little different this year. Our job bears aren't onsite at campuses, and they're not at our colleges, but now they're being performed virtually. So luckily, one round of our elementary screeners for our teachers had already been completed for the 19 and 20 school year, and this allowed for over 40 applicants to meet our elementary campus administrators and some of our department teams face-to-face before we were ever, you know, released due to the virus. So for many of the students who are occurring right now, they've already met the administrators face-to-face, and that was definitely a blessing and positive. But we will continue to use telephone screeners and campus committee to interview and hire for the 2021 school year. So in addition, we're also in the middle of our contract recommendations and delivery of those contracts to our staff. It also will look different this year, but we're extremely optimistic that we're going to be able to provide online contracted contracts to our contracted staff and online letters of reasonable assurance to our other employees, because as we entered the last phase of our paperless onboarding and our paperless personnel folders. So we've been working on that all year long. We recently were able to test it with the addendum that we provided to the teachers for their job descriptions for their remote learning during this year, 1920. And we've had great success with getting those out and then getting those to come back to us from teachers with an electronic signature. So we're quite optimistic that after the board approves contracts tonight, that we will test the system again, and hopefully we'll have success with that also. So finally, we're actively trying to help all of our student teachers get their hours that they're trying to get, albeit even if it's remotely, because we want all of those student teachers that were on our campuses to hopefully come back and teach for us next year or in the near future, or at least be able to be eligible for employment. So that's kind of what's been going on in the shortlist for HR. And on the communications home front, there's been quite increased communication, starting with the first announcement of our school closures on Wednesday and March 11. And after the initial week of what we're calling the no-break spring break, we embarked on an MISD connected campaign, which included the creation of district Instagram accounts and a district Pinterest account to go along with the other district social media accounts at Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. Candace Russell has been exercising her communication muscle, and she is posting anywhere from three to five posts a day on these various social media sites. And they have ranged from school district information, government information, community highlights, and probably our most favorite is all the brags that we get to do for our teachers and what our students are doing during this remote learning time. It has, it's just been, it's been really a joy and a blessing for us to be able to shine light on what's going on with them. Viewership of all communication has increased tremendously, as you can imagine, and Pinterest alone's gained over 1,400 views, new viewers in the first few weeks. So finally, we have pushed forward to recognize our teachers of the year, our Spirit of Montgomery winners, and our MVPs. And our banquet and award ceremony was postponed, we're still moving forward with the selection of our district elementary and secondary teacher of the year, and we'll be able to educate our applications on regional competition and hopefully get somebody to go to state. Finally, working on Teacher Appreciation Week in May, and we are partnering with a statewide campaign of hashtag teacherscan. And also during that time, we're going to recognize the unexpected educators, where we can show some love to our parents who have taken the job on of becoming those teachers while they also handle all of their life responsibilities and their own careers. So Candace has just done a phenomenal job, and it's just been a lot of fun to have a partner in all of this communication stuff. So continue to be part of the community virtually. We're still on our, we're now doing Zooms with the Chamber and other community partnerships that we have. And so that's my update on HR communications right now. And they wanted me to convey to y'all that they're extremely proud of the work being done by their peers, and they look forward to seeing everybody's faces. So thanks for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Good report. Next up, we have our report on academics, remote instruction, and I believe it starts Or maybe not. Dwayne, you're on mute.
Trying. Okay, I've unmuted myself about six times, so hopefully it'll stay unmuted at this point. If you'd have told me on Wednesday that we left school and didn't come back on Thursday and Friday, had spring break, and that we were going to roll out remote instruction the next Wednesday after spring break, I would have never believed it. It's a testament to campus administration and teachers. They have figured this thing out, and they've done it with some grace and with some thought. And hopefully, we had a part of some of that, because we started thinking about how is this going to work and how are we going to roll it out early on on spring break? And teachers took it by the horns, and they've done a tremendous job. So everything that we're doing right now is directly related to the relationships that these teachers are keeping with their students that they have in their classes. And that's the most important part of the remote part to me, is that they keep those relationships and those social, emotional learning things going with their students, because it's a tough time for everybody. I never thought I'd want to be at work so bad in my life. But I'm here to talk a little bit about the grading policy, and I'm going to try to share a document, and I don't know if it's going to work or not, but I'm going to try and see. I hope everyone can see our grading policy. You've all hopefully seen this. If you've had, if you have kids at home that are going to Montgomery schools, then you should have seen this, because we've put this out to everybody, and we came up with it by forming groups. Ms. Graves formed groups with her principals, and then we went to teacher groups, and we brainstormed in the beginning, because we didn't know what to do, just to be honest. The first one is that we limited the number of assignments per week, because if you have a student and they're, we realized this is not going to be a normal semester, a normal instructional day where they go to school eight hours a day and have teachers talking to them and doing things. So we limited the number of assignments coming home. We also changed our grading scale to a progress evident incomplete, which is really a pass/fail. And we did that, and I can go in-depth on the why we did that, but basically, we asked teachers, could you replicate what you're doing right now at home? And they said, no, we can't replicate that. And so then we looked at two things. Can you assess students as far as mentally, the minimal acquisition of the TEES that were required to teach them? And then number two, could you distinguish whether that student should receive an A, B, C, D, or F? And they very quickly came back and said, we can minimize tests to see if they've acquired the TEES for our class, but we would have a really hard time giving an A, B, C, D, or F to a student on limited amount of grades. We're not having weekly tests, we're not having final exams, we're not having those types of things. And so that's why we chose to go to a progress evident incomplete. We didn't like the word fail, because a lot of our kids are incomplete, not because of circumstances that they've brought upon themselves, but they're there because of circumstances in their family, whether they have, they're socio-economically disadvantaged and parents are still working, or parents are not working, and the stress that goes with that. We realized technology was an issue, and so we've tried to get that out to students, but sometimes they still don't have internet access at their homes. And so we call that into account. So we're, they're incomplete, but in our eyes, they're not failing, because we're going to give them every opportunity to be successful in this remote learning experience. We're requiring teachers at all levels to communicate weekly with our parents, and we will use what's called a grade placement committee to review. You know, kids really went to school three quarters of the year. They're only missing about nine weeks of instruction, and a lot of that was going to be star testing. So we're going to await a lot of what goes on with the student on what they had, what they had achieved before we left for remote instruction. There is one big topic I wanted to address with the high school students, because it's been, it's turned into something people have a lot of questions about, and that's the, we are not calculating grade point average for the spring 2020. We're not allowing that to count for in their grade points, and that's for every student. And the reason we came with that, and we came up with that, is when we started looking at grade points, it became clear that the inability to assign an A through F that was reflective of the students' grades earned during a normal semester was going to be important, because we don't want to overinflate one semester for those kids that are earning grade points, because if you had a really difficult class during this spring semester, say, I don't know, make up a class, calculus, and you get an inflated grade point, well, if I took that last year and my spring was not an inflated grade point, I might have made a lower grade point than you're making this semester. So we felt like the only way to level that playing field was to not take grade points on this semester. And the only question we had about that was on the NCAA clearinghouse. And we are happy to report that our students that are going to qualify for NCAA, the NCAA clearinghouse did come out, and they have adjusted their grade point system so that students are not penalized if their school district decides to use a pass/fail grade for their spring semester. So we are not alone in what we're doing. But I did want to draw that and give you some information on that in case you're questioned about why we may not be using grade points for this semester. And then the final thing is dual credit classes. Lone Star is going to continue to give them credit for those classes. They were already set up on Blackboard. Colleges have really been doing remote learning for some time now, online classes for some time, so they were set up. They will get a letter grade for their dual credit grade, and they will get a PE or an I for their high school grade. And then AP classes, I think it's pretty interesting, college board immediately stopped any new material in their AP classes, and they began putting out resources to review kids to prepare for an AP exam. And they will award credit, just like they went through a regular semester for those classes. It's going to be an adjusted AP exam, and students will take it at home. It's going to, I think it's a 45-minute exam, and they'll, they have a system set in place where kids will take it at home, and they will still earn college credit for that class if they pass the exam. So that's a little bit, there's a lot we could talk about on how we got to this system, but we had teachers involved, we had administrators, we had principals involved, and there was a lot of, a lot of discussion that went into this final product. But this is the product that we're using for grading over this remote learning period. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Hey, Dwayne, this is Jim. I did have a couple of questions about that. If the kid was already failing before this all started, what happens with them?
Well, it depends on how far they were failing. You know, we take, at the high school level, we take it on a semester course average, and we also look at the yearly average. So like, your first semester can bring your second semester up or vice versa, your second semester can average together. But if they were really failing, like they failed every six weeks up until this time, then they're probably going to repeat the course at the high school level for sure. We are going to, at the other, but we're going to look at any kid that's got an incomplete during this period or that would- during this period or that would, is failing up until this point. We're going to use grade placement committees to look at what work they're putting out and try to give every kid the benefit of the doubt. But if they were failing long before even a junior high kids failing, we're going to require a summer school experience for them to be promoted, just like we would during a normal, a year. Like I said, three quarters of their grades were already complete by this period. So we'll look at what they did during this period, but we're not, it can't make up the whole difference. A lot of individual decisions.
Yeah. That's a good segue though into something you just brought up, summer school. What is that, what is that going to look like?
Yeah, that's, that's the $64,000 question. You know, I, we were talking about, we've been talking about this every, every Zoom meeting we have about that is coming and we don't know what it's going to look like. We're hoping for some guidance from TEA, but we know that's probably not going to be as helpful as it could be. If it has to be a remote learning experience, we've got, you know, we've looked at breaking them into smaller groups, maybe, you know, we only do two-hour classes in summer school for roughly 20 days for our summer school period. So we could even, if we can find staff to man it, we could even break down into, you know, two-hour direct teach blocks with six or eight kids on a Zoom video and, and try to direct instruct. That's one way we've looked at it. We've looked at some computer-based programs that we already use at the high school level for, it's called Edge Annuity. It's for credit recovery. So we can put high school kids into a credit recovery program that they can do at home. So we have some options, but we have not gotten down that road yet. It's been tough just getting normal instruction going or what would be considered normal instruction going. But we are thinking about summer school.
And I did have one other question on my list. The, the thing that I wonder about this time that's missed, I'm sure you guys, you're still working on this, but I think about the classes that build on each other. You know, so you have the, the pre-calculus, the go to end the calculus. Well, now we've missed, you know, nine weeks of pre-cal at the end.
Right.
What is that, how does, how does that handle when it goes to a whole new class that maybe you weren't teaching before?
Well, whether it's lucky or not, the entire state's doing what we're doing. So we're obviously going to have to change the instruction in the next class. So we're going to have to end up incorporating whatever instruction was missed during that nine-week period and a course like calculus, it's going to be very important that they, that they take off where they feel like the kids got to in the spring semester through whatever, remote or not remote, and move forward from there. And they'll have to compress it into a, a normal class period, you know, and, and to a normal year-long class. But all teachers, that's forefront in all teachers' minds right now is how are we gonna, what is that going to look like for my first six weeks of school next year? You know, I'm going to be trying to compress what they didn't get from the spring. Luckily though for us, a lot of the spring, good or bad, you know, there's a lot of, there's whole weeks of testing that take place and there's some preparation that goes on during that time too. So it's not like they're getting a, a full nine weeks. Some of that would have been taken up with some activities that weren't necessarily new material.
Makes sense.
Okay, thank you, Dewayne. At this point, I think we'll move into our instructional continuity document. I believe that Wendy is going to get us started with that.
Yes, we're going to put this document, we're going to share the document, just one second. There we go. This is a plan that we had a lot of collaboration in putting this plan together with principals and mostly district office staff on how we would support all levels during this pandemic. So the plan starts out with, it discusses, you know, the forms of communication on page three, and it basically addresses how we're going to work with the parents remotely where they can find the information that they need. You know, we do have a remote learning link on our webpage. The campus webpage also provides for remote learning. This school messenger, the homeroom teacher, the campus principal. From there, we move into the continuity of instruction and I have to piggyback on what Dewayne said. Our teachers and our principals have done an amazing job of getting, getting this going. It was a challenge for us at first. We do not have a common LMS or learning management system that all schools could work from and we didn't want to have to invest any time in training because we needed to hit the ground running. So we allowed principals to work with their teachers to select the type of format that they would use to communicate and teach and work with parents. And many of them, we have Google Classroom going on, we have CSO going on, we have smores where the parent can go on and click on different links. We, we allowed each campus to work with what they were familiar with using. Therefore, our teachers were very well-versed in that and can be as helpful as possible with the parents as we worked on pushing those things out. The number one focus through all of this has been that we, you know, really focus on our curriculum documents that we have in place and continue to focus on the TEES that are required for this semester in teaching. And so if you go down just a little further. This is the CTE plan, the different things that are involved with CTE, which we've already, Dewayne's covered some of, and then child nutrition, which Bobby has covered. It's not really scrolling very fast. We also have, you'll see counseling is part of this plan. Our counselors have done a wonderful job in reaching out to parents, working with parents, putting videos out and little tips out for social emotional development. Our counselors have been excellent also in reaching out to the parents to make sure that they have everything that they need and they're doing well. So our counselors have been playing a big part of this as well. And a couple of other things that are worth noting in the document, I'm going to let Jada cover special programs. We did also in this document include the roles of every member of this process, which includes the parents. What is the role of the parent? What is the role of the student? What is the role of the teacher and the principal? And all of that has been clearly established. Our classrooms are all keeping, Dewayne kind of mentioned this a little earlier, a communication spreadsheet. On this communication spreadsheet, the principal has access to that so they can work with the teachers to make sure that things are going well as far as communication. On this spreadsheet, they will, the teacher will keep notes on the communication that they've had with the parent. Is there progress towards completing the work and that sort of thing? This has been huge with making sure that we are contacting all of our, all of our parents and keeping in touch with them. We also had to look at having some students pick up packets. So organizing the packets and having them pick up was kind of a tricky, a tricky little plan, but we disperse packets every two weeks. We know which students need a packet versus which ones are online. And so the teachers prepare work. We have essential personnel, which is the principal or the assistant principal. They will go to the campus, make those copies the day before, place them in a file cabinet outside and the parents will come and pick up those packets and they have two work, two weeks' worth of work at that time. So we basically will dispense packets four different times throughout this, throughout this process. Other than that, you know, our teachers have done an amazing job and our principals have as well. They have spent a ton of time working through the process and making sure our students are taken care of. And their, their instruction has been spot on. It's been great. We have received a lot of compliments from our parents. We actually did a survey after the first few weeks to ask, okay, how's it going? What can we do? And we got some really good feedback and we got some really, really kind words from our parents on what a great job their teachers were doing and keeping in touch and, and pushing out that instruction. Is there anything that I didn't touch on? I couldn't really follow the packet because it wouldn't scroll as quickly, but is there anything that I didn't touch on that you've had a question about with instruction? Our number one point is our teachers and our principals are amazing. They've done a great job. Jada's going to touch on the special populations and how we've handled that group of students.
Hello, everyone. I'm going to talk to y'all a little bit about dual language, our dual language group in ESL, as well as gifted and talented group and GT group and the dyslexia. So I'm just going to look on my handout and y'all have yours too, but I don't know if we can scroll up to any of the sections or not for dual language. Who's in charge of this document? There we go. I can start right there because special populations is what we're on right there for dyslexia, if you want me to, Amy. I think you're trying to make it scroll. Okay, dual language, here we go. Dual language team, can't say enough good about the two teams at Stewart Creek and Lincoln Elementary. And our instructional coaches at those campuses have been instrumental in helping these teachers as well. They follow the regular Montgomery aligned curriculum like all teachers, but what their charge was, was ensuring that each grade level had, also had a Spanish choice board. And so that's how they have pushed out, it's called a Wakelet and that's how they have pushed out the daily activities. They have everything translated, they have it in English and Spanish. I think one of their biggest charges was ensuring that kids had access and whoever did not, they got them laptops and devices that would help them. A lot of the components that dual language classrooms use for enrichment and extension opportunities are online. And so those teachers can actually track what students are getting on every day and the minutes they're putting in on those, those online extensions that help with language development and vocabulary because it's practice in English for our Spanish speakers and it's practice in Spanish for our English speakers. They've done a good job because a lot of the resources that are on that choice board in English for the regular grade level classrooms, they've had to create their own pieces for the dual language choice board. So kudos to them. We meet, I've met with the dual language team just to get feedback from them. They're doing a great job of staying in touch with their families and a lot of zooming and touching base with kids. And I've seen lots of happy faces on Zoom meetings because they're just happy to see their teacher and hear their teacher's voice and be able to communicate with their, their language buddies in their dual language classrooms. Region sixes have been another great resource for us as far as our English learners. They've really done a good job of training and keeping us up to date on the state requirements, anything that's coming down from TEA. And so we've zoomed with them regularly to stay in on top of any strategies they have and they've created a great website, Region Six website for teachers to have support. They just pushed another one out this week and that will allow for online PD for our, our teachers who work with our English learners. So appreciate the partnership with them for sure. The next group I'm going to talk to you about is gifted and talented, our GT kiddos. Of course, many of them, when we started this, were chomping at the bits, emailing teachers, ready to roll. The great group of teachers and kiddos. They also use Region, Region Six resources and some online pieces. They, we created a Wakelet for them as well. Two of our instructional coaches worked together to create different activities, extension and enrichment activities for, that are specific for gifted and talented students and created that and shared it with teachers to share with parents. What we were trying to do is support the teacher, not give them more, but to create some specialized instruction for these gifted students that, that we know they need without the teachers having to create all of that on their, on their own. So we've gotten good feedback about that GT choice board. We also did a teacher survey. I just reached out to the teachers to say, hey, how are you? What resources are you using? What's working for you? I'm blown away by the responses. They're using the Wakelet we created, but they are using so many pieces of instructional technology and really creative ideas, especially for those kiddos who may not have access to technology, but they of course still want to touch base with those students on a regular basis. Just like dual language, our, our GT have also collaborated a lot with one another across campuses. Fourth grade GT at Stewart Creek is talking to fourth grade GT at Lone Star just to share resources and collaborate. That's been key in this whole process. And we're getting ready to roll out the GT showcase. That is part of, that's a piece of the state plan that we're required. What we're trying to do is stay in line with the state plan on what the requirements are, but not overwhelm or ask teachers or students to do anything that is just unreasonable. And so we've got some flexibility with that, got teacher feedback from that and they're going to, they are going to organize a virtual showcase by campuses based on student need and student participation. That will not be something that's required, but if the student and parent want to participate in that GT showcase and continue the hard work they had already put in on their projects, their yearly projects, then they're going to do that. So teachers are excited about that. Again, we wanted to make it simple. We wanted it to have some flexibility so that students who wanted to could participate, but teachers and parents were not overwhelmed. That's probably a big key right now is making sure we're doing what we're supposed to do and we're providing those opportunities for our different groups, but we're also keeping, keeping in mind that this is a very different time. Parents are trying to work still, kids who don't have access to technology. So just considerations of all those things. We are planning on online PD for gifted and talented teachers. They're required six hours per year update. So we're having those discussions and working on those things now. And we're putting our first GT newsletter out this week, just a virtual newsletter to share resources, really zeroing in on that social emotional piece for our gifted and talented students. You know, these kids expect a lot from themselves and this is a very, this is a frustrating time when they can't collaborate with their friends and, you know, shine like they're, like they're used to. So working on those. And then our coaches at the elementary and secondary level have created a resource list. It's a long resource list for all GT teachers of all types of online virtual field trips, social and emotional pieces, different things that those teachers can use. They don't have to go find them. The coaches have put them all in one place and given them to the teachers to use at their fingertips. Okay, then the last group is under special populations. So these are our dyslexic students, whether they, whether they are covered under special ed or 504. We, when we meet with our students normally face-to-face, when we're in our normal school year, we use the Nye House program, basic learning skill program, and it's pretty intensive. Nye House does not approve us to use their program virtually in full because their, their statement to that is that it's not being done with fidelity when you try to do that. Of course, we also have to consider if we try to do virtual sessions with, with our dyslexic students, not all of them can be a part of that. And so what we've tried to do is two things. We've created a choice board. This includes activities that align with all the pieces that a dyslexic student needs, is required to be taught. And so some review and continued practice of those activities have already been taught. It's a bi-weekly choice board, again, trying not to overwhelm, but put it out there for these kids and parents to work on it as they have time. They can choose one or two activities off the choice board a week and they also And they also have a learning ally account, which is an online reading platform that really helps them practice those skills as well. It's got many different avenues on that website. So we've opened those things up to them. And then the second part is that weekly contact with the parents, the students and the teachers, the classroom teachers to ensure that those accommodations that dyslexic students have to have through their 504 plan or their ARD, that those are being met and that we're helping teachers figure out how to accommodate their weekly lessons for the dyslexic students, just ensuring that they're getting those accommodations and that we're working side by side with those teachers to help support those students through the regular curriculum. And also just making contact with parents. You're a parent of a dyslexic student trying to work through different curriculum activities all day. It can be frustrating for, for the parent and the student. So supporting the parent and just letting them know that, that our team's here for support if their students are struggling on specific assignments, of course, in reading and just meeting those needs as much as we can. We're continuing to meet on students whose evaluations were complete. And then we have a letter going out to each parent. After we've gotten a little bit more guidance at the state level, we have a letter going out to each parent whose student is on the list as a referral. They're waiting to be tested or evaluated for dyslexia. So we're communicating with each of those people as well, those parents as well, to let them know what our plan is. And we've already began discussions on these kiddos and how we're going to make up the time loss for these students. Any questions about those areas for me? Okay, I think next is Meredith, is that right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much for having us tonight. I think this is perfect timing for us to be able to update you all on the things that are going on within Montgomery. So many great things. Our teachers, I cannot piggyback and brag enough on the work that they're putting in. The principals are working around the clock to guide the groups. We're all trying to do our best to make sure that every kiddo gets what they can right now, which is not everything they're used to receiving. But, and then when we think about our students within special education, who obviously have some very individualized, specific needs. This is a very intense time for some of our parents. And so really the communication, this has kind of been a hidden blessing because we've been able to really spend a lot more time with our parents in, in more of a collaborative way than we typically would have. Because, you know, they come to school with us, we service them and then they go home. Well, now the, the parents are the teachers and they're, they're starting to realize that our team of behavior staff that usually support their student or help with the feeding and help with the, you know, the communication and making sure that they can continue those critical skills, that team is not there with them so physically. But we are spending lots of time zooming with our parents, phone calls, emails. We've dropped lots of materials off on porches so that they have things that they're used to using. We made sure that all of our students had their communication devices from their classrooms so they can continue to communicate with their families. We did send out individualized plans for every student receiving special education services that outlined, and this was through the, the guidance of TEA, it outlined, the student, of course, continues to have their individualized educational plan. Given our current situation, there are going to potentially be pieces of that that we are not able to provide. And so what we've done in those plans that we've already sent home to every family is saying, these are the pieces of the plan that we will continue to provide. And then these are the things that we're going to need to talk about when we come back, catching up, making sure that we have those things in place so that our students don't use the, lose those critical skills that they've worked so hard to gain and then maintain. We also have our diagnosticians that are continuing with evaluations to the best of their ability. There will be components of those assessments that, of course, they're not going to be able to finish. But we're doing absolutely as much as we can. We're getting the parent information, the teacher information. We want to make sure that we're not delaying services to kiddos just because of our current situation. We continue to have ARD meetings. Another brag, you know, in, in our world of education, of course, you collaborate with your neighboring districts and, and those in your, your same position. And I just have to brag on Montgomery because we were, our spring break fell a week behind everyone else. Yet in multiple ways, and I won't bore you with the list, but in multiple ways, we are ahead of some of our neighboring districts that are just now potentially starting to have ARD meetings. Well, we never missed a beat. So before even the Zoom kicked in, we were having ARD meetings on the phone because it was due and the kiddo needed services and that's what we're going to do. So again, very, very proud of our team, very, very proud of our teachers who are working to work with the parents, collaborate with the general ed teachers, make sure that the work that's going home and is being sent home has been modified. It's been accommodated. The student has accessibility to be able to access what it is that they're learning. Our speech team is working with our parents, occupational therapist, our, our PT. We've got our adaptive PE teacher is just having too much fun because she's sending home almost weekly lessons and FaceTiming with kiddos that are being active. And I'm getting reports then from parents, but kind of behind the scenes, that they've never seen their siblings interact so positively as they are now because we're kind of stuck at home. And when Ms. Phillips sends home our adaptive PE lesson, it tends to be a family event. So our kiddos are being active, they're moving. And again, for a lot of our kids, those are critical skills. And if they don't continue to move their muscles in the ways that we are working with them at school, they can lose all that they've worked to gain. So very proud for that. We do have our, our, our summer school specific to special education is extended school year, ESY. That is a big topic as well as, as general ed summer school. Our parents are wondering what will we do for ESY? Because we recommend that for students that we do fear could potentially lose, again, these critical skills that we work on during the school year if we don't try to maintain that training during the summer. So we continue to plan for ESY. We continue to have a virtual option that we're planning for. And in the event, parents either decide that that's, they really don't feel like that's going to be beneficial or they would rather wait, then we will, of course, work with parents on an individual basis to see how we can beef up what it is that we're doing with them once we do return. In the event, we are able to offer some brick and mortar option of summer school. We will, of course, offer that for our students within special ed as well to make sure that we're, we're following those, all the guidelines by TEA. We meet multiple times a week as a department and then individualized groups. And I'm on Zooms directly with TEA twice a week just to make sure that we're up to date. We know what we're doing. And then I push out information to the individual groups as needed. So again, very proud of our kids. They're doing great things, all things given. Very proud of our teachers, our principals and this team right here. This is a group effort. We've built this plane while it's in the air. And I really just can't brag on this district and that this has been amazing. And I'm just really proud and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to share what we're doing and then answer any questions you may have.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Meredith. And to everyone, appreciate you, great team, great effort, doing great things for kids. So thank you again for the update on our district operations and instructions during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Dr. Reese, may I ask a question?
Yes, please.
I want to also echo especially what Ms. Berg and others ended with was, you know, everybody's done a great job. And this is a question I asked earlier. When will we know something about graduation and/or prom? I'm being taboo, I apologize.
I'll let Mr. McFadden cover that. I know we had a, a meeting this afternoon, this morning and this afternoon with the high school principals regarding that.
Yes. We have, we're committed to have, we, we sent a survey out on Friday when they announced we were not coming back. We decided we needed to survey. So we surveyed our parents overwhelmingly. It came back that they want to have some type of ceremony, even if we have to delay it. And so what we have, we are proposing, we've coming up with a June date. We're not giving up on the May date. We, we feel like we've got another week or so before we have to make a decision about that. Then we have a June date and a July date in mind for graduation to take place in our stadium. You know, what that'll look like, we're not sure. We can space kids out six feet apart on the field. We can let parents, if we can space them out in the stands six feet apart. We think we can do that with our Jumbotron that we have in the stadium. We'd all have a good view of everything, videotape the whole thing and, and have a, a, a good experience for our seniors. We, we do feel like we are not forgetting them. And, and, and sometimes it seems like maybe, maybe we are. But we want those things for those kids too. This is what we do. And, you know, 13 years of education needs to be celebrated. And so we have not given up on that. And, but unfortunately, we do not see a way that prom can go forward at this time. Now, if something changes, we would revisit that. But prom, by the very nature of a school dance, I think you're going to break the six foot spacing. At least at the junior high dances, it was our intent to keep them six foot apart. And so we did lots of line dancing. But unfortunately, we haven't come up with a way to deal with that. We have thrown some ideas out there, maybe a weekend. If, if it loosens up by June, maybe we can have a weekend. Maybe we could even do a picnic, a place where they could sign yearbooks, do that kind of thing. It's really going to depend. We need more information. But we are putting a letter out, our principals are going to put a letter out this, this week, the parents saying, hey, we haven't forgotten it. We are going to have, I think it's June 29th. I don't want to, I don't want to say the dates because I'll get them wrong. But if there's a date in June, there's a date in July and we'll make that decision. As soon as we get the best information that we have. And so we haven't forgotten it. We're just trying to wait until we have more information on what, how, you know, what the requirements are going to be.
Thank you, Mr. McFadden.
Beau, I did have one other question, more of a technology question. We talked to, and Bobby may have covered a little bit of this before, but on the, the, you know, kind of in my view, looking back as to something that would have been really helpful is a, a technology platform for all of the class, classrooms together, you know, single platform. I know we've talked about that. But, you know, we've, we've done a really good job to get past it for this wave. But, you know, they're talking about a potential wave again in the fall or next spring, you know, where we could be potentially out of school again for an extended period. And so I'm just wondering, you know, I know we've been looking at technology platforms for, similar to the college level, but what kind of expense is that? Have we done any pricing on that? And what effort would it take to, to get to the point where if we were deemed by the state or the feds that, that we have to shut down for two weeks as a school district because we're a point location of the, of COVID-19, could we, could we the next day shift to an online virtual learning environment? You know, I think that's where we're at right now, it seems to me, is we have to be that flexible in order to, to, to keep on going. So I'm just wondering what, what we're doing with that and, you know, what the cost involved in that would be.
Yes, we are definitely have been researching that. And we've looked at a couple of options over the last two years. But in the last two months or really last week or so, last month, excuse me, I've done a lot more looking at different options. The prices are all over the board depending on which direction you go. But I do believe that we'll have a recommendation through the board before the end of the summer to look at different learning management systems. LMS is the terminology. And that would give us opportunity to get the staff trained. Obviously, that's probably the biggest issue is making sure that we have great trainings and are able to implement it with fidelity. So we're going to study that and get a lot of eyes on it and let teachers look at it and give some input back to us. We've looked at Schoolology is one that we've looked at. And then I obviously heard Blackboard Connect mentioned already this evening. And that's a little more robust system. Some colleges do definitely use that. But those are, are a couple of options that we have looked at and a couple of just single sign-on. So kids don't have to have eight, nine different passwords for eight classes or what have you. But I do believe we can have you better pricing or definite pricing and a plan in the next couple of months.
Were there any other questions from the board? Well, it's all, Beau, did you have any other, other things to say on that?
No, sir. Just one last time, I'd like to thank everybody. I've, I've been so inspired by the educators in this district and the work that's been done to support kids during this time. And very, very proud of everyone and the work that's been done. Thank you.
I, I agree with Dr. Reese. Mr. Dossi, I had a question and it's not really, it is related to COVID. It's not really school operations. So is it appropriate? I wanted to ask, when do, when do you think we as a board could start meeting face to face again?
Yes. Gary asked me the same question earlier and my response to him was, I hate these meetings. I, I do not like these, these online meetings at all. I'd much rather be meeting face to face. So as, as soon as some of the restrictions are lifted, you know, we have like 14 or 16 people on, on this meeting on the call right now. And usually we have that many. I think we're limited to 10 people per meeting. It's going to be that way until we, until we get past that. I don't see how we can have an in-person meeting. But my vote would be as soon as we're able to, the next meeting would be in person because like I said, I hate these online meetings like this. Okay. We do have the accounts paid reports, the monthly financials, accounts paid report and the monthly financial report in the, in the board handouts. Unless anybody on the board has any questions about that, any questions, then I would say, let's go ahead and go into the closed meeting. And, and then we'll, we'll return after we get done with that meeting to the open meeting. Okay, thanks everyone. So we're going to come back into the open session. Do I have any motions from the board?
I'll move to approve that we moved to approve personnel as presented in closed session, which includes teacher contract and.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
All right.
Motion passes. Thank you, guys. We'll see you on Friday.